Email recording in progress.
All right, good afternoon. It is Monday, April 29th, 2024, at 1:33 PM, Horney County Court Work Session is now session. Topics for discussion today are the county administrative cost policy and the OSU extension contract. For discussion, obviously, for this work session. We'll start off with the administrative cost policy. And you have some items here, Trezor?
I do. I emailed the Trezor's group and asked if anybody had a policy that they would be willing to send me for like administrative cost. I only got two responses, one from Jackson County, one from Coos County. So I made copies of those things for you guys to kind of look over and adjust. And I know kind of a lot on the spot, so.
Okay, it's work session, like.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I, in me reading over these, I kind of like, I like Coos because it's one, it's one page. It kind of brings everything in, talks about, you know, and they're all called, everybody calls it a little bit something different.
The Coos is the one pager.
Coos is the one pager.
Okay.
They call it cost allocation mythology. Jackson County calls it chargeback mythology, but it's all, it's all the same. It's the cost of the various programs to run all the different departments, like payroll, accounting. These policies even include maintenance, which I hadn't thought of before, but maintenance does come from general fund and is helping all of our departments across the county. County Council is also included in these.
Yeah, I just was looking at it. I didn't think about it, but insurance. You know, our insurance policy covers building and RHC and fair and everybody else. Out of general fund, road department pays their portion of it, but, but other than that, we don't.
Don't allow like RHC for it, their portion of the insurance.
Yeah, so there's a lot of other, when you stop, I guess, I mean, no stop to think about it, there are a lot of other elements that happen within the general fund that cover and work for all the other departments and funds.
So like even if you look at Jackson County, just glancing at it, there are the programs that they base their chargeback on is accounting, actually even the board of commissioners for work that the court may do or the board may do. County Council mail courier. So currently our postage machine is funded from the general fund. And I know we have departments who come over and use that for mail, maintenance, HR.
I think it's Steve too.
Yeah, the audit is listed in here too as well. And so like the road department contributes to the audit, but the other departments do not. Outside of general fund. Yeah, it is kind of interesting. I'm glad that I asked because I was like, oh, I opened my eyes to like more.
Well, I like the last little asterisk paragraph at the third page of Jackson County's that says, "For purposes of cost allocation, computer replacement fund, debt service funds, capital project funds, and funds set up for pass-through monies are not considered operating budgets." And I don't know about if the pass-through still is a lot of what is, how much work it takes to even pass through things or not. But at least like they're the capital, you know, project funds, et cetera, transfers within. I, I'd like to identify any types of funds that we think should be an exception to our general, our general administrative cost policy. Getting specific like they are here, and some of these might be something in the future, but we need to think about it, study it a little bit.
So if I recall, if I recall under budget training, in order for it to be an operational fund, it has to have expenditure category, right? Or something like that?
For operating funds, I believe, I don't want to quote anything without looking, but like our policy does say that reserve funds are exempt from paying administrative costs, but I think, I mean, yeah, this is a broad picture that we need to find out what, what the parameters are and then work on what. I think the reserve funds don't have like a materials and supply lines, those categories per se.
Yeah.
They will just have an expenditure line if, if you needed, but it wouldn't have all the other.
Because a lot of those funds, the money has to be from the reserve into operating.
Right. Yeah, they can't just be separated from the.
I wonder if they did the specific categorizations based on any type of legal need to do so specifically, or if they just made judgment call. Or they, or they just called out all the ones that didn't happen to fit into an operational fund. That would be interesting to find out. Cause they may have just said, these are the ones that aren't, so let's list them out and get, get a little bit specific on them. And justify it, so to speak. Let me look at the short one again, please.
I'm going to go around the budgets.
We didn't do it at all until the budget crisis, Joe, just to do it.
Yeah.
So it was a big shift that happened.
We might can step our toe on on the budget. Because if we don't receive all those funds back in the general fund as proposed, that usually ends up
sources revenue generally. I wouldn't feel it was tight, but I definitely think capital projects.
Well, no, that's, I thought that that was good in this one, where to clog out.
That's the one I just read.
And then even transfers between, but like with the darn health, that would transfer into the primary community.
You know, that would be a, a transfer within a department, because they're all in the community deal, but they're all funding that.
So, but yet we would count that as a expenditure almost twice, potentially if you're treating it.
Would that end up being a lot of other departments for that?
You know, we don't have money to have it move in. So I'm looking somewhere, RHC, I would tell, now home health hospice.
Because what I would like to do is if we, if we start proposing some of these things, then we actually look closely to see which ones are, would that include, if that's, if that's our rule, that a department, any transfers between, wouldn't call those, they're sub offices.
Yeah, transfers what they have the apartment between funds.
Yeah, if we just called out of our budget, let's list all those and see which ones do that, make sure that the total wouldn't be an impact we couldn't do. You know, if it gets justified not to, not to do that for, for transfer, those type of transfers. How much are we talking about, you know, in the current or proposed budget? And are we leaving anybody out, or are we, you know, and, and just kind of play around with it for a while? Once we get to some proposals, rather than just, oh, let's enact it, boom. I don't know, get some, do the math, I guess, is what I'm saying.
I would, I would assume that we would be doing the math before.
Right, right.
I just, I would say, whatever is decided, I just think it should be standard and applied fairly to all the departments, so.
Right, that's why if we're thinking we're going to do this, and in our particular budget, that means these specific departments, because they have that, and it would be this amount of money that would no longer be for administrative cost. And how would that affect our ability to contribute to a contingency reserve every year? You know, I mean, once we're not so tight with our budget the way we are right now, there's not a lot of wiggle room. Is my general understanding. But also just, I wondered how many of these we're going.
Talking like to ask a question, how are you asking like the figure that we have in the budget this year based on the current policy? Like, you want to know what that looks like with a new policy, right?
Right, right. And so like whether the budget board wants to do anything this year or recommend to the county court to make a change or to maybe not make one this year, just one minor change and then keep looking on it for next year's, throughout the year. So that we feel very up to speed.
Realistic, clean, if we're going to make like a big change, it's, it's going to take time and we're going to be, it'd be really hard to get it done for the next.
That's what I was kind of thinking.
Go forward with what, with what we have, and then this is something we can work on in the coming year. Back to the question about a reserve fund, in, in the budget manual, like chapter four just talks about the types of funds. But it just, on the reserve plan, it talks about, the government may set up a reserve fund to accumulate money for financing the cost of any service, project, property or equipment. Under local budget law, the reserve fund is a way to save money from near the year. Expenditures can be appropriated and made directly from a reserve fund. The resolution, resolution or ordinance creating a fund should state the purpose for which the money in the fund can be spent, and every 10 years, the governing body must review the fund to decide if it should be continued or abolished. Any unexpended or unobligated balance left in a fund when it is abolished can be transferred to the general fund or to any other fund designated by the governing body. Money in a reserve fund can only be used for the purpose in which it was established. Expenditures for that purpose may be budgeted and appropriated directly from the reserve fund. Transfers may not be made from a reserve fund unless the fund that receives the transfer uses the money for a purpose consistent with the reserve. So I think like, an example would be like the road fund and the transfer we have built in, where it's the operating reserve. For that, so we have a transfer built in from the operating reserve to the road or operating, if you need. But it looks like, like a thought would be like the road equipment reserve that they needed to expend to buy a piece of equipment, but it looks like it could be.
Depending on how it was originally stated, and I'm sure that if we were to do that transfer, that it was, when it was set up, because we never know.
And I, and I like, unless there's just not enough spaces for characters to be typed in, where Bill is starting to put some of the comments or you, somebody putting the budget notes where for those reserve funds, it would, you know, briefly say what that fund was set up to, to do. You know, so we wouldn't have to look them around, you know.
I think.
No, okay, that, that was fine, you know, that.
I don't know how much room is in our, in those character fields, but I do, I have a copy of a resolution, I think. I don't think.
Or at least you could just say refer to ordinance such and such, that main highlights are this, this and this.
Steve did a, a review of all the reserves before he left, and I have a copy of that.
Oh, that's cool.
But that would be something that would probably be good for you all to have on hands or.
I'm glad we did that. If so, that would have been around 2016. So it's 2024, so we've got two more years before 10 years. If we wanted to stay and keep them like that.
No. I kind of lost track of what we were, of the last question was.
I'd like, first, if you can reiterate your thoughts on the event center and the capital project privileges.
Which, it kind of speaks to it in the Coos background.
No, it would be Jackson County.
I need to address Jackson on all these. So I should have stayed on by, I was laughing, and just like a date on the corner of them. Yeah, so in the asterisk of Jackson, it kind of addressed my concern that way of a capital project funds having administrative costs pulled out. Now, if it was a type of project that we were very
flush with.
You know, it would, it would feel better to be able to play to pretty exact on the cost of the project. But I don't perceive it as having many projects. I think of the past, given my last one year, which we've had a tag, any projects that I would ever say that we, you know, so comfortable as to take the large portion.
Or if there'd be language that the practice will be whatever, unless the county, the governing body, you know, holds, holds a, you need to specifically change that with the project or something.
Definitely, there, there's going to be different projects that have, when you actually apply the funds and you apply programs, that there's a normal place to apply for that admin, where none of the funds that we received had that opportunity. And typically, there is, you know, like when we look at what public health does with all their grants, they have a portion where they can pull up for administrative costs, and it's part of that grant process. Obviously, that's not going to a capital improvement project. And so it feels very normal to, you know, their process, we're administering the functions of a state with those dollars. And so it feels very good to be able to capture some of the ministry costs, because we're actually fulfilling the duties of the state with said funds.
I, in hindsight, honestly, I feel like those, all of that should have probably had its own fund created. You know, and been like a capital project fund that's like addressed in the.
Right, you know, like you say, because we haven't tackled something of this nature, we're kind of a barbaric group still with it. And, you know, I don't know your feelings at the moment of putting it into its own separate one before we expending more of it, or if, if we want to leave it as is in the next proposed budget.
I feel like, because we've already expended some, like if we had started from the, you know, day one and done it that way, but I feel like it muddies it a little bit, if there's, we've got part of it over here, we've spent part of it.
Now we're going to create.
Two of them that have expenditures from them.
Would the auditor be able to advise, should, should there be a desire to move in that direction, how to make it?
Oh, I'm sure we could.
And it's one of those deals, I'm like you, right now, we know where they all are. They're all being managed by the same grant manager, which actually helps, because then you don't have different people trying to keep track of all those funds for the same project. And so, you know, I, I think we're looking at other ones that we're tackling. Obviously, we set that money kind of aside in a jail reserve, but we need to maybe put it into a capital improvement jail, potentially, you know.
Yeah, at some, at some point when there is.
Once we're.
Once the project starts, I think it should be changed to a capital project.
Well, then as we receive enough funding to actually proceed.
Bobby Joe, in the very first line of our, our administrative cost policy, it says, "This policy is designed to support the cost of general fund administration by funds held with the county." So is that mean we're only talking about general funds? Because we've pulled quite a few funds out of general fund over the years. So does it not apply to general, read your first sentence.
No, the, the monies that this policy, the monies that are received from this policy go into the general fund. This policy wants to support the cost of general fund administration of having five funds held with the county.
Okay, so that you saw.
We could have, like at the time, maybe they could have added a word that was like by other funds, but, no, no, as long as, I was reading it wrong, I think.
Okay, the policy is designed to support the cost of, how about county fund administration?
But it's, but, but it's designed by funds that will see into the general funds, right? By.
The way it is, I think is okay, this policy is designed to support the cost of general fund administration. It's general funds that are administering all these other programs and funds with dollars out of the general fund, but it's general fund administration. The general fund is administering all those other project.
We had, we had a capital project fund that was specific for the Air Ground Event Center. It's not the general fund, it's its own fund. So you're saying that the way this is worded.
But the general fund is still administering by fund.
General fund. I'm going to repeat what you said.
I think it's okay, I think it's okay.
The services are being provided, you know, as a transfer on license departments from the, the book side of it where you're getting checks.
Okay.
The, the second part of it is the part that gets a vote, by funds held with the county, by held, by funds held.
That's what I was.
By the county.
By the county.
By administration of other funds.
By all funds held with.
By all funds.
Unless, and then if we have an exception, if we end up having a special exception that would be addressed, you know.
It, it's from administration on at work, it's probably, certainly after administration.
Yeah, I just thought we might want to clarify that with a word or two, but it's okay.
Well, I, I do like all funds.
And you can put an asterisk right after that for any paragraph disclaimer that we may eventually.
I think the reason maybe, oh, I don't think it'd call, but because we did put in the line about reserve funds were exempt. So maybe that's why we, we, they, I, whoever didn't use the word all.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
But I mean, we can wordsmith it.
Well, that however, when we put an asterisk like that, and then that asterisk would say reserve funds are exempt, and it would say capital outlay, you know, whatever we want to make exempt. And not, hopefully not too many categories, but.
Well, that's how they kept it pretty clean with what they included with their asterisk, what wasn't, wasn't. I don't think it was.
Yeah, theirs was fine. I just meant we would add our.
Yeah.
Result funds. So what is the history, if you know, Trezor? Did the county, has the county had debt service funds ever?
A debt service fund is.
I'm glad.
Is a fund used to budget for the payment, the payment of principal and interest on any, on all long-term debt. So if the county had debt, then we would have a special fund.
There's probably a lot of counties that do.
Right, yeah.
Should we take out a hundred thousand dollar loan, whatever that repayment on that's going to be.
Right.
Every year needs to be budgeted for in a separate fund, so that we ensure that we have funds to pay for it.
So it's not bad to leave in, you know, so that we don't exclude anything.
I think it would be good to include all the different types of funds, however we do and then recover. I mean, we possibly could have a debt service fund at some point one day, so it'd be good just to have it.
Yeah, to not necessarily strike the language right out of them there.
What it boils down to is the administration of any and all of those funds. The, the transfers, the, the reports, the quarterly reports, the, the bill paying, the, the receiving of, I mean, it's all those transactions. If it were just, if it were just general fund, that all the, all those monies and everything were coming into and going out of, it would be a lot more streamlined. But when you add all these different funds, whether it's the fair, the, the building department, the reserve funds for the road department, the complexity and the amount of work that goes into that is double, tripled and quadrupled. So, so if the general fund is supporting those funds and those administrative duties, then those other funds should help support the general fund.
Well, the hard part is where so many of them do, you see the transfer from general fund, we're really just leaving them back and forth, because even a fair fund gets a transfer of under twenty, but they pay back over twenty thousand dollars in administrative costs, so they're really receiving an additional hundred thousand out of general fund, because twenty thousand of that already goes straight back to general fund and costs.
Is that twenty thousand out of their normal budget, or is that out of their spending?
Ten in each. One's got thirteen and one's an issue. Transfers from general fund.
No, there's a, there's a hundred twenty thousand dollar transfer, but then within the fair, where we got operating in the fair, the administrative costs that are calculated are just a little over twenty thousand, that actually then just goes back. So they're really receiving.
They're straight. Paying payers for their payback.
Yeah, and that, that's where I'm kind of like, does that make sense to do that when you're already supporting it and you're just?
I think, I mean, that's.
But clearly it makes it a little muddy.
But in a way, it's, for some lines, like mine, it keeps it easy to see what transfers have to happen to make it all work from a budget standpoint, it is.
If we deleted, if we deleted all administrative costs from any fund that receives a transfer from the general fund for operations purposes, then you'd end up starting to have to look, well, does this one get it, or does this one not get it? Is this one charged administratively and this one's not charged administratively? So it's, it's better just to have a blanket policy all the time. And I realize that you would know.
Yeah, I, I just feel like if we took it out, then you have to, even though it's more work, honestly, to have the work, the administrative cost and the transfer, I feel like it's better and cleaner that way, because it shows general fund's going to support this much. The bear's going to pay back this much for services rendered for the various departments.
It's cost of doing business, it helps kind of budget for that.
Even, even like the building, you know, like, and hopefully.
So that doesn't apply to it. Well, do you have some language, or have you liked to identify an exception?
I think the exception's very well stated with Jackson's policy, you know, computer replacement fund. I don't think we have our own separate fund for that, that's kind of rolled into IT.
What does it mean backed out?
We have an information technology fund, reserve fund.
Like if we made an empty.
But we don't call it.
We don't see that now generally for, for our administrative. So. I mean, we do.
What is it? Something system.
Are not considered operating. Well, backed out would just mean.
It's like two, where you're. It's like two, where you're.
Like, they're not using those balances to calculate the cost. Is that okay the way it reads? You think? Well, I mean, you could, you could change it to. I mean, the guts of it are gonna be within the S and then you could address it within the policy up here that. If we beginning fund balances. Or, yeah. However, you want to work it up, but they're just. You know, based on a zero balance or.
So that would be comparable to what they're perhaps calling.
I just don't want us to not capture. The administrative costs.
Because it does have.
In a way that we now.
It does have expenditure lines. Built into that one.
Many of those departments gone out of it because we still need it.
But another conversation, you guys, I think that needs to be had, like in our policy, we have the percentages. Listed right here on these policies. They don't, and I haven't asked that question yet, but like if you'll look at COO's. You know, like at the top, on the board of commissioners, the allocation base is the department's operating expense as a percentage. Of the total operating expense. So I'm like, well, how do they, how do they come up with a percentage for that? Like, what is the percentage?
It's not. I kind of like ours.
They, what that is. Yeah, I was surprised that there wasn't hard numbers attached to. This piece of it, you would think that it would be, that it lived with a mess.
Since, since this is just methodology, not the policy, is there a.
This is what they.
A separate policy versus a methodology? I don't know. I'm wondering if, if this is like consistent for this kind of thing and then. It would allow them to change the percentages. Easily on the budget.
Like for instance, if we wanted to. Do the asterisk thing and include a paragraph similar to Jackson's, but make it exactly what we want. But then leave pretty much the rest of it the same. And then until, until we get to this methodology stage for ourselves, if we, if we want to go there. At least every year when we approve. The cost policy annually, we would be able to easily. Um, at least in that paragraph, that asterisk paragraph. Any major shortage if we. I mean, we could, that way we could at least. If you check with auditor.
Ultimately, it's not about making the general fund fat off of the other funds. It's about paying for the services that those funds receive from general service departments.
Well, I'm, I'm not worried about that, I'm thinking it's that. My concern is when we go through the budget process. And we're, we have a proposed amount that will be coming back into general fund and that proposed amount isn't achieved. Then we aren't needing that. Budgetarily, and so then that actually ends up reducing our general fund. And that's where I just want us to be very conscious of that because. If we don't actually receive all that because all the expenditures didn't occur to the budgeted amount. Our general fund then ends up being less than we thought it was when we started the budget product. So I'm just trying to wrap my head around.
I can look up the history for you, but.
How, it's not. Make sure that we're looking at that and what, how much difference that is. I'd be curious over time. What that, you know, we're kind of nailing it between a ten percent difference or what.
Yeah, we can, I could look at the history of what's budgeted and what's been received over the last few years, um. I don't think it's a huge concern because we budget. I mean, like. For instance, could be. Like our CAF program has been over budgeted for the past four or five years by anywhere from twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars. Um, so. Like the budget is our, our best honest guess, so to try to get it closer. Could be doable, but I, I, the reason I base those figures the way I have is after the first year, we had to do numerous resolutions. Because I tried to budget it as close as I could to the penny and then it ended up being different. And so. To get there for everyone, we had to do budget resolutions to increase their administrative cost. To capture those funds. And it's. It's time consuming and a lot of work. I'm not close to that, but I feel like if we base it. On the budget, then we're safe. We don't have the extra. Resolutions. To capture the funds, basically.
So besides the administrative cost means that we cap, are there any other stick out to you that tend to not?
I think we're getting closer on the cap, but I know like primarily. Previous judge, just, you know.
Put a number in.
Put a number in.
Right. I just, you know, as we're going along through the budget process, you know, and we're. We had our original, you know, four hundred thousand with what you started wrapping then. And then we're, but then I see the places where we're. Making up for those gaps, that's where I'm, I'm just really concerned that. We might be able to do that this year, but then having to continue to make up from those same places that we did this time around. And be sustainable over time. And that's where, it's not just the administrative policy, not achieving its full revenue. It's some of the places where we made those reductions can they get found? But I don't know that we've really made the cuts necessary to be.
We haven't, we haven't, we have, we know we haven't. We need professional advice on that.
That's kind of our bigger picture that we're up against because if. If some of that, you know, gets adjusted in the budget process, obviously it's some of the budget minions where we can try to work through some of these discussions. Because I, I have some suggestions in some of. The ones that we haven't gone through yet once we get there that I want to discuss. But I just feel like, you know. Well, I doubt that we were that inflated in what folks brought to Bill originally. As a budget officer, you know, I doubt that there was that much fat in there. There wasn't things that couldn't have benefited the county. Or even the backup staff or some of our essential services that we haven't achieved over time, you know, it's. You've got to figure out some of those cuts that we made and pulled out of the budget. Should we have left those in and maybe. Chose to cut elsewhere, how that we get our, our essential services in a better spot.
Part of that overage, part of that overage of that four hundred and forty thousand dollars initially was. That we tried to increase, um. The HSA by another two hundred dollars.
Right, which you mentioned that that add about when you have a hundred and seventeen.
Well, not everybody has an HSA, but even those that do have, and then, um.
But do you have to budget that? Do you budget your HSA number for your actual employees to only take it at this period of time?
Yeah, for the, yes.
Okay, I didn't know, you know, like.
Yeah, and then, and then if somebody leaves, it's not taking the HSA and the insurance.
It definitely spent.
Yeah, for that previous person, it doesn't, but if they didn't, weren't taking it, if they weren't taking the insurance and they, and then they want to take a sign up for the HSA. Yeah, so, so that part, portion of it's covered, but, but, um. Oh, the other part of it that costs is that, to run up that four hundred and forty thousand is we tried to go from paying. Uh, ten percent. Of the insurance cost of fifteen. Yeah, taking on another five percent for all employees to take insurance. And again, that added up immensely as well. So those were the first two things that came out. And then other things like, you know, let off about the new position came out, the, um, the maintenance budget for the, you know, had eighty thousand dollars.
You know, we did two, two maintenance places, there was.
Step increases, yeah, sheriff's vehicle or sheriff's department was cut back by twenty thousand, twenty to five thousand. Um, for fifty-five to thirty thousand. I left, my idea was I left that money in that one so that if they come upon a real. Uh, major need for a vehicle, then we can probably at least provide a new one. For, and get them through a crutch. But you're right, next year, i- if revenues stay flat. And things keep going up, we're gonna, the cuts are gonna have to be even deeper.
Yeah.
And, and I would like this, I know this is budget, budget discussion, but. When we see how we roll, we might need to, I mean, I don't think we're gonna have enough time in the May second meeting. With a budget or to truly deliver the way that, that Kristen's talking about because. You know, I made my little stand, this is what, you know, we need to do, and we're not doing any of them right now. The kind of budget we're working on and we have to get that. I believe professional. Strategic advice on how we can be sustainable, even if we don't get breaks on any great new sources of revenue. If, if. If our, um, near-term future is gonna look like this. And we. Whether it's payroll needs to be reduced or some other things that can be done. That we don't want to do, but, but can be done, then we need to have those discussions and here's some recommendations to guide us.
The two scariest things that, that, that concern me is PILF and SRS funds. If we get a change in administration with the deficit that we have, it's entirely, entirely possible that those funds, those two amounts of revenue.
Don't have to be on her. Yeah, they don't have to be on, even the levels of their current.
And re-appropriated every year.
I have not been able to find, find the email or the document where it was the first year I was commissioner. Somebody was sending out from Naco some PILF historical stuff. And in the nineties, I've got eight million. Now what do we get? And, and, I mean.
Wow.
In a year, we'll get eight, it was like, it's, as it has been reduced, it's like.
We're about one point two, one point.
To get eight million again. And of course, you know, Grand County has a lot more than us.
There's no inflation to a sustainable level ever calculated into it with annual.
And SRS came in last Thursday.
One point three five.
Yeah.
And we budgeted one point three.
You, and so the road will receive, they get one, one million eighteen, and then the schools will get three hundred and nine.
But, yeah, so.
There's not much to.
But I, I mean, right now, we're still, as the budget board's going through the proposed budget and. Just kind of making sure there's, but then we get to that bottom line of. We need to, we need to invest in ourselves somehow with some of these decision, at least a decision or two for this year. We can't wait a whole nother year.
No.
And then living paycheck to paycheck, year to year.
I mean, it's, it's gotta be a priority to.
We're budgeting, but did we, were we able to go full two hundred thousand in the contingency last year? Or was it only part of that?
No.
For that transfer to the operating reserve, is that? Yeah. I'd have to look to see what we, I didn't think that we quite did.
This year's budget was about a hundred and fifty-six thousand.
And I.
In my first budget, when it came out to me, it was, I think, a hundred and fifty-six thousand. And this year I was like, the only way we're gonna get there is if we put that number in first, and that's what I did.
But I haven't made a transfer from general fund to the operating reserve and I probably won't until actually the first part of July, I can backdate it. Um, to see. What our cash balance is, what our budgeted figure was, where we are, to see what we have available to, to actually. Put in the reserves.
Yeah, but still need to remember what, what we're trying.
Right.
To put some.
Well, if, if, if we were in the same boat as Lake County. We eat the whole thing up in one year. Or, I mean, if you, if you use that to backfill your one point one million dollar shortfall like Lake County has right now, we'd use the whole thing.
I mean, you can see there, the factors affecting them.
Were there.
Are like bank bankruptcies and things, I mean.
That never were planned.
I mean, that's why when I read it, I was like, I'm sending this out in case other people, I didn't know that, that's.
Barry and I'd already talked and he's, it's definitely with me. I talked to him the other morning and he said that they're actually cutting personnel at this point.
Wow.
They, they have no way to know when that, when they will change with all those bankruptcies. It's literally putting them in a tough spot.
This year is gonna be a different year than last year was because even we need to consider all that. Each vacancy that comes up, we don't want to consider whether it's. Needs to be refilled or not.
I, and, yeah. I think this is a good conversation because I feel like for a long time, we've just been like reactive. And. And we need to get proactive and start talking about it now and coming up with some solutions or like. You know, as big, as positions become vacant. Do we really hire that position back?
Well, that's sadly, we're, we don't have a lot of fair F T, but we do have some still that are not in the essential category. And we kind of really decide, do we pull those F T into the other essential levels we need, get stabilized there? And then you move forward from there.
If, if position B is essential and position D is not, you eliminate position D and offer that person to go to position B.
Right, like it doesn't have to be an elimination of a personnel, but it might be a. Are you actually going to perform this duty instead because this is where we're actually needing this F T. That's what I'd say, the administration, administrative policy is just all a bigger part of our whole budgeting process, you know.
And with what I said on, on this administrating. Um, cost policy, this is not about making the general fund fat and helping us get to two and a half million dollars sooner. It's about paying for the services that those funds receive. So with that in mind, first off. Are, are the current rates, uh, per dollar amount, are they sufficient? And if they are, or if they need to be adjusted to actually realize reimbursement for the, for the support that they're receiving. And then do we create potentially maybe a third category that's a, a capital project type of a, of a. Line, a category that, that takes two percent or one percent. I mean, depending on, on the size of the project. And, and the dollar amount associated with it, it's five million dollar project, you know, um, ten percent is five hundred is two fifty. Is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars or so, it's a hundred and twenty thousand and two percent, something like that, just ball card figures.
Love to hear other people talk their math out loud.
So I have to start at what I know. So I work my way, I cut it in half and work my way down. Um, so. So is that amount then, is it two percent amount? Does that pay for the? Does that pay for the, the services that that project is receiving or is it less? Do we put a cap, a flat dollar amount cap on it? That we figure, you know, historically, this is, this has created this amount of work. This is how much work. Is gonna be entailed in, in the administrative portion of this project and we take fifty thousand dollars. You know, so, something like that. I'm just throwing, I'm just throwing shit out there for.
I think we do, we do and will do so for capital project. You know, here in the county, I mean, really, and say in the last twenty plus years. We have, period. We have one that's planned to pull the trigger on. And we have one where we're still trying to get there and the chances of another one. I don't know if anybody has one on the radar, but I sure do. And so I hate to get too wrapped around the axles of it. I know that it's gonna take every bit of that project we can, so. For the one that we would actually pull the trigger on in this calendar year.
I think, I think we should set.
And so I think.
A, a low amount, but something. I don't think it should.
Well, that's my, you know, I said, you know, if you. Pick twenty thousand dollars to come back from that project into it. I would feel comfortable with something more like that than the, like now we had it, like a hundred and thirty-nine because it's, like I say. It's just gonna take a lot to get all the amenities to make the, the whole thing function. And then when we go to do a jail project, same thing, it's gonna take every dollar just to put in every sink and bathroom and. Make an also get for a project, you know, uh, even with the build out of the fairgrounds project, we're not even proposing to build out. But just things will be plumbed for further improvements down the road, but you'll end up with one bathroom potentially in the original project. Our times are coming, and I'm gonna see if our capital projects.
No, I just don't, but.
In the works, yeah, we're, we're in a spot right now where we're trying to achieve some.
What's the, what's the average, I mean, in, in this breakdown right here, million dollars or more, is it four percent? That's probably only gonna affect the road department.
It's only affected the road department, at all.
What is their adminis- administrative fee?
Let me go around.
Average.
Okay.
Is that, I'm not even, when you look at this, it's zero to four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, and ninety-nine dollars is, is sixty percent. And then you add one more dollar to it, and it goes to five percent, it decreases to five percent. All the way to a million, basically, add one more dollar and it goes down. So, so.
They're just kinda arbitrary.
At nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, you're paying five percent, but if you add one more dollar to it, you save a percent.
So, within the budget from twenty-one, um, here's the numbers that were back.
And the road, and the four seventy-five, eight and three so far this year.
And then we're proposing it could be up to, yeah, but I'd like to, it'd be interesting to see what the proposed numbers within this year was, which is kind of comes back to my conversation, like, are we budgeting this, but then really only achieving, you know, twenty thousand less each time, which, if you have twenty thousand here, twenty thousand in another one, right, then that pretty soon leaves your general fund from what you propose, sixty thousand dollars less than what you proposed, if your administrative costs.
Yeah, I'd, I'd have to give them back a show.
Yeah, 'cause there's a difference of thirty-three thousand dollars between what was budgeted this current year and what was budgeted.
This is off topic real quick, do you all have Courtney Crowell working on anything? Or anything at this time or so?
Uh, she's helping with Laura, something that we've been budgeting.
In terms of?
Um, providing support from the governor's office, the boy who did here, he's.
Okay.
Treated the process.
How, do we have, we're working on any grants at this time?
Um.
Giving us money for something such as our strategic fund, or this or that, I just wanted.
No, it's a T A.
Yeah, funny, so, in case we can't get it, we don't have it in our budget, but we still have to do it, we're still, say, this is a priority in the county. You know, I just, I just wanted to check and see if any of you all have, have any financial going out right now, okay?
Um, no, and in regards to, um, grant services, um, a gentleman came to talk to me a couple, two, three months ago, that the county has used for grant writing before.
Who know what you're talking about, yeah?
Okay.
Stan Foster, Stan Foster, it was Stan Foster?
Stan.
It was Stan, right, Steve.
And, and most of the time, I did, he did, he did things like, I know he did some stuff with the tribe too, back in the day, but, you know, getting a building, not necessarily a fairgrounds event kind of a thing, but I don't know that he did professional services, acquired that kind of funding for us.
He worked on stuff with the, um, I forget what the number was, it was right when I came on, um, taking the five percent of land that can be resumed
Oh.
That project.
Okay, he did some analysis, um, industry, industry suitable rural, you know, property in Hardy County that could possibly have been under that new zoning, a little.
About some.
Part of that, I remember now, I, okay, so he did, they did that.
He did, uh, he did.
Did some grants, there's some past, there's some past uh, documents, whatever, in archives, I'm, I'm getting some grants for this.
No, they, they have, it's just, um, now, he, he worked a lot with Stevie Grasty at the time on stuff. What you want.
Okay, what was that question, the road?
Um.
Right, historically?
Yeah, what, so, so they're, they're in the category of one million or more, at four percent. Against, so what was their actual expenditures?
So, the first year was a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Second year was ninety-four thousand five hundred. Then seventy-five thousand, seven fifty, eighty-three thousand, two eighty. And then their proposed budget is a hundred and sixteen. So, the first year, the largest figure is they had a capital outlay um, purchase of five hundred and twenty-five thousand that year, so, that would have been, that would have been a big jump. Um, it looks like their materials and supplies, um, well, not all this, but they usually run a little over two million, or right at two million.
In their materials and supplies, just their normal materials and supplies, no capital projects or purchases, or nothing?
Um, and then historically, the, the administrative costs, it's gone to the general fund, so the first year, our budget was two hundred and seventeen, we ended up with, um, about one ninety-two. The second year, our budget was one thirty-seven, and we ended up with about a hundred and eighteen. And then the following year, the budget was one eighty-eight, and we ended up with about a hundred and seventy-one. And then twenty-two, twenty-three, our budget was two hundred and fifteen, and we ended up with about a hundred and seventy-eight. And then last year, the budget, this is where the biggest gap is, the budget was two hundred and eighty-one, and we received about a hundred and eighty-nine, and I can say that is because of fare, because we budgeted for the full expense of.
Yeah, we thought we would do it in the calendar year, and then did not.
Yeah.
Have that, and that's, but where if we weren't, if we're budgeting a, a specific amount, like twenty thousand versus a percentage of the project, and then that project isn't achieved within the calendar year, it wouldn't stub our toe in the general fund, like it did back, 'cause that was one thing that was coming in my mind, well, I know we budgeted for some of that expenditure place, and then it didn't, so it was never realized in the general fund. And so just, you know, like I say, how many of the progress projects in the jail project, they don't foresee any, you know, major situations like that, but I, it needs to be on our radar in the budgeting process so that we don't end up with the gap, you know?
Well, and I think, I mean, we could address it, I mean, simply in this policy by stating that, um, you know, large, go ahead.
No, sorry, you.
Just, you know, we could state something where like a large capital project is maybe on a case-by-case scenario, or, or, you know, depending just you know, honesty, and we don't have a lot of that.
I know that sounds vague, but I, that's kinda what I think we ought to do.
I feel more confident than, than basing it off of our current policy or not, is.
So, one thing that's kept us from getting backwards in this, like you said, that, that even with this number right here, the road department being budgeted at a hundred and sixteen, and their actual comes in at eighty-five thousand, that's, you know, that's, that's fifteen, that's thirty thousand dollars less than what was projected to come into the general fund. One thing that's kept us from getting backwards on that is your administrative costs are based on the expenditures from the previous year, the actuals from a previous year. So, this, this budgeted number, while, yeah, it has the potential of being that high, what's kept us from getting in, I think, in that type of a situation, is that it's based on actuals from previous years, what actually comes in.
Basically, you're saying our expenditures don't come ever down over time, they, they tend to stay.
Yeah, you know, well, like the road department this year, though, I mean, when they bought a new piece of equipment for five hundred thousand dollars, that bumps it way up. Or this year, they're, they're wanting to replace the house in, in Andrews, there's a three hundred thousand dollar purchase. Um, those kind of big, big expenditures boost that way up.
Which, do you follow that capital outlay, is that correct?
Well, it is a capital outlay line, so that's where I think, like, we have to be specific, like, if it's a, if it's a capital outlay, like a building project, that's, you know, millions of dollars, that's different than buying a pickup.
Yeah.
And I, you know.
Define those two within what we're.
Mm-hmm. And so I, I mean, we could just address that somehow in here, where you know, I don't know how we do it without sounding too vague, but that on a case-by-case scenario for like a large capital building project, and, and hopefully in the future, that would be in its own separate fund that would be exempt anyway, so, you know, we would be more proactive about.
Yeah, we should, with our current plan.
Mm.
Well, I, I, when you just said exempt, exempt because it's a capital project fund?
Well, I mean, like, however we wordsmith this.
She's kind of.
If we had like a capital project fund specifically for like the jail, as an example, we could then determine how that fund would pay some administrative costs separate from the policy, if it's warranted in the policy that way.
Because depending on which funding source, you know, we, we aren't sure on what additional funding sources will be achieved to complete the project, and if, if there's the ability to write in an actual upfront administrative cost on that, but we, we don't know at this point because we aren't there yet, and wow, I don't know if we want to use the word operating funds, because we do have funds that incur this cost on.
We, we would definitely need to define what a capital project category means. You know? I don't know if there's a, a.
I mean, a capital.
But I meant just for, even just for our, our.
Capital outlays, it's capital.
Yeah, we would just may, need to make that distinction, and I think we could, at least until we for, for this coming year, come to some agreement, and right after that, reserve funds are exempt from paying the administrative costs, capital, capital project, outlay funds are, are negotiated or, or set by, by a county, at a county court meeting, or some, you know, something, I know that's not good for budgeting stuff, but, I mean, I think we need to make it vague enough to where, for these next few years, we can revisit it and either go no one, twenty thousand, you know? Or is it just, we do it this year, and that's it for the remaining conduct of the project, you know, I don't know how you're thinking.
Well, what I was thinking is, because we're still in the budget process, and we don't see a lot of funds for the project, you know, spending five hundred two July one, there will be some, but not a lot, and, um, that what we write in this budget's really important, but will be dictated by what we decide in this policy, and so, if we write that, you know, for this project, we are going to have a set amount of X, then we know what we get with the budget, that we're not looking at administrative costs that's going, there's administrative fee that's going to go back in the general fund of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, we would know that perhaps we're looking at twenty thousand to go back in, and so that we're budgeting on solid numbers of what will actually be achieved in the general fund, because if we were already cutting places on a little, you know, trying to get our numbers to strike, have a balanced budget, that's a hundred and nineteen thousand dollar difference that isn't there.
Right.
That we remain to, as, as we go along in the budget process, take care of and get there with.
Bill, what are, what are you thinking as we chat over here, 'cause I know you're the one that's gotta put pen to paper or keyboard to. Something, well.
Um, I don't know, I, I'm it's gonna take some more research, because I think my point is, is, again, it's not to make general fund fat off of administrative costs, it's about, it's about, um, um, paying for the services that these funds get, so therefore, I don't, I don't like the idea of excluding any fund, if there's, if there's work that's gonna get caused by that fund, however it is, then it should owe a card back to the services that are managing and administering, administering it. So, I, I, I don't, while I think at the time, these numbers and percentages, you know, of thresholds on, on expenditure dollar amounts, and the, the percentages associated with them, was probably an easy way of figuring out how to do it at the time. Um, it really doesn't capture what is the true cost of doing business.
I don't know, it's a comparison.
I was gonna say, I, you know.
Well, it'd be interesting to know what, what coos, what kind of formula, or whatever, how they come about, 'cause it's not in here, but it would be interesting to know what they use.
But, as we look at comparable county budgets, these counties do have much larger budgets that they're working with, and so, I don't think ours is more complicated than it is, we do it size. Um, and I don't, I'm not proposing that we don't take any administrative fee from it, I'm just proposing that we set it now, so that it's unknown in the budget process, and that we don't, then on the other end, leave our project short of being able to get the things done that we actually need to in the project. And so, like I say, I'm not proposing nothing, I am proposing that we set an amount that could reasonably cover those ins and outs that will occur with the project, but they'll come in, you know, once you actually have affirmed that you're doing it, the invoicing will be on a basis set within the contractual agreement, and so it's not like it'll be like nickel and dining out of a project, it'll be big chunks, big chunks, you know? And then on the grant side of it, you know, the, the fair manager will be capturing that within the grant programs for each of those are coming out of, and working at the treasure to make sure that they're coming out of the correct side of that, and so, you know, it's just a fun, you know, situation, once we get into that, but that'll all be stepped forward in in the process, once the contractor is secure, all that will be outlined in a very formal way within the contract, and so we know at this time, we're gonna be receiving these invoices or these parts of it.
Um, I think you and the fair board probably know all this far better than I, but somebody did mention to me the other day, you know, people mention stuff, um, said with the new bill design, um, process that is being used, et cetera, they said, just be careful because um, change orders, you know, any change that it's normal to have things as it's to be built, like, oh, no, we bad, you know, we act, let's see, we can see now, is this really, can we do that, yeah, that change orders will add huge cost for most contractor.
The purpose of doing this design build, wasn't it, was to, to eliminate or?
Lock you into a lot of the change order, it's all it.
But, but they say it will, they'll do it, but it will, it will add costs, so I just, whether that's true or not, I'm just throwing it out.
Whenever you remodel your kitchen and you change, oh, I decided I want this pantry cabinet over here instead of here, what, that, that's gonna add cost to your remodel. So, so it's the same kind of concept on much bigger scale, but I think the design build process is supposed to allow for more flexibility during the building process to design as you go, and not be locked in, as you say, to a specific blueprint or something that you.
Well, we're fortunate due to, and I, I'm not trying to oversimplify the project, but due to the simplicity of the project, opening a large shelf with just the front space, you're creating that additional footprint for the kitchen, bathroom, office space, it's It's, it's a need for a lot of change will be very minimal just due to the uniqueness of the project where. You know, like most office buildings, once they start in, oh, we change all the chairs, all the desks or all the whatever. Then like you say, that has that rippling effect that.
So for this, for this policy moving forward. Um, I don't have a, I mean, I don't have a suggestion at this point, I think it's gonna take some more research. I mean, I can get on the phone, start calling some other administrators and. Budget officers and whatever, see how they're doing in different counties, um. And and then maybe come up with some other ideas to include, I mean, I don't want just their policy, I want their formula too, I wanna know how they're arriving in.
Maybe, maybe, uh, among the people you call, you know, call the, um. Board chair or judge, uh, I think would be the board chair of Jackson.
All divvy this up, like, so I'm busy, you're busy, you're busy, like, this is a big project, I feel like maybe we sit down as a team and say, okay. I'm gonna call these three counties, I'm gonna call these three counties, and then we come back together because it's.
Look at AOC, help the challenges. One count, you know, and it really does come back to that, and so I I have a hard time, you know, like, I like being agree to some of this, but at the same time. I don't feel like we are on track of capturing what it costs to do business, uh, here the treasurer and finance services. Currently in our, our, I don't know how it was developed when it, when it came into play, but I don't feel like we're that far off of that number. Of saying this is the cost of business, um, it's.
What page has got the, 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 um, the total transfers, administrative cost transfers on it?
Zero two five.
Zero two five.
Yeah, um, here's a thought, I mean, just to get this policy reviewed and approved before the, in that fiscal year, we could make. Some small verbiage changes, um. To address, you know, the fair and what have you, and then over the course of a year. With a strategic plan where we come up with our own mythology for next year. Um, because I think we could do something simple, a two or three page mythology. Um, you know, and come up, it'd be nice, I could reach out to these two counties and say, could I get your percentages on how you calculate this? So we have kind of something to go on to see if we're in the ballpark with our figures, um.
I mean, did, did you help develop that at the moment? I wasn't sure.
I mean, it kind of got thrown in my lap, like, I came up with the verbiage here, and then Judge Reynolds came up with. The criteria for the percentages in the dollar.
Do you feel like the price per employee is still reasonable?
I do, I thought we could, you know, it might change the overall total, but we could change it like to FTE, but then that might change things too. Because we have some people that are part-time versus.
That's fine, I wasn't looking for a change, I just.
Um, okay, so I'm gonna just read this off to you, looking at our current policy, we could change verbiage a little bit. And feel free to interject. This policy is to, is designed to support the cost of general fund. Administration indirect or overhead expenses by departments within the county. Instead of by funds held within the county, because then that would open it, and that opens it up to departments, whether it's building, public health.
Departments, the departments are, we have departments within the general fund as well.
Right, but but we're supporting the cost of general funded, so it could be maybe, um. Or overhead expenses by. Departments outside of general fund within the county. And then moving down to the second little paragraph. At the end, where we have reserve funds are exempt from paying administrative costs, we could add a line that said. Um, capital outlay projects, capital outlay building projects. Are subject to county court discretion.
Yeah.
Cause that differentiates between just, right, you know, if it's a building project, then we.
Uh, the choose one?
Yeah, I like their Jack saying so, yeah, that paragraph makes it on a stand like that they calculated annually. That'd be interesting to know.
Sounds good.
Um, would there be any way to just look up the budgeted versus per budgeted versus actual of this administrative cost line? Just to see if, you know, how close we were.
So those are the figures I come around off earlier.
And is this, this isn't for the rope, but this is for the whole.
That's for the whole, that's the general fund line, the money's going to, so you can see one line.
So those numbers you were reading off to her wasn't the road department, that was, that was general.
Yeah, this was just general funds, sorry, so this is, they're telling me to change this, but this is the, the budget. And then this is what we received in. So there's a big gap here and that is because of.
Eighteen thousand. Seven thousand. Eighteen thousand. Thirty seven thousand.
No, this was imposed when we had.
So I look at these numbers here, and this, this is what your, what your true needed to operate off of, right? These are your true operating, administrative operating costs, because this is what the actuals were. This is what the budget was, but this is what your actuals were, so, so we're anywhere between a hundred and ninety and a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. And true administrative operating costs.
And you know what's based on a given year, like what part? Okay, this, this is really good, just to, you know, I'm trying to see the numbers and get it in our heads, they'll know what we're working with and against.
Has any of this decreased since two thousand nineteen?
The, the figures would be right there. Oh, no, the, all the percentages, they've remained the same.
So we, we have this thorough discussion, you know, we have some just general sessions, but at that point, you know, we were just kind of status quo. And how many major projects and stuff, um, that could potentially, I would say, just, like, with this situation being. What doesn't happen, but what you're budgeting for.
If we know that, or if we're charged to a four percent. I mean, we could, depending upon. What the court wants to do, like, if you wanted to adjust these, these percentages. And then have a big discussion about the fair, I mean, we could calculate that out and see what, what that figure looks like. Budget officer, lots of input.
Well, my, I mean, to be honest with you, um. After this exercise of being four hundred and forty thousand in the red, and then we went and cut things, stripped things back out. Uh, just like you said, Commissioner Showman, about if, if, um, the true budgeted amount is not actualized. And then that leaves general fund short at the end of the year. Yeah, so, but at the same time, not receiving enough does the same, does the same thing. Not, not budgeting enough, and not including enough in administrative costs, can lead you short as well.
Right, and that's right, I think we're in the ballpark with our current percentages and how we're doing it. It's just, like I say, that's where, as we look at. The lack of major projects and engaging in this, it's better education for us of what that can do. You know, in a given year, when that doesn't occur, but then keeping the amount reasonable, so you don't impact the. The good of a project that can be done on the other end, but still capturing what a cost to help administrate the project.
We were, you know, again, capturing appropriate costs to administer, but just quote, just what he just said. We talked a little bit last week, I mean, you could go, you could go into the weeds far enough to look at the treasurer's salary, look at HR salary. Look at, um, other roles within general fund that support. And all, and all that, and then, and then find a formula to divide that all up.
Which might be kind of what this, this we're talking about too, that they look at those numbers you're talking about, and then they run their statistics. Based on that to calculate it.
It, it'd be nice to see that calculation and see what all they take into consideration.
Mm-hmm.
And how they then, what they're dividing by, if they're dividing by staff, if they're dividing by, by budget. The percentage of the overall budget that is each department or each fund, you know. We take our entire budget, and I don't know what it is, I don't have to sit down and add it all up, but if we took every fund, the general fund and every fund, and added it all up. What that comes to, and then what each one of those, what the percentage of each one of those funds is of that total number. You know, I don't know, I don't know if that gives them a, a percentage basis to then, to then calculate how much it, it would cost.
Yeah, because they're alluding to something within that.
Yeah.
Statement.
There'll work to be done, I mean, for sure, and and deciding what our method wants. What we want the method to be going forward, but.
So we wanna divvy up then, or, or, the thing of it is too, is everybody's different. You know, the treasurer in one place might deal with it, the budget officer is gonna deal, administrator. The administrator in another location is gonna do it, the judge is gonna do it, then.
It's not apples and apples anywhere, so.
So it's hard to just say, everybody call the, the treasurer and find out what they do, because I don't know.
Like when I was calling around, trying to talk to different counties about former government stuff. It, depending on their way of communicating and my way of communicating, the way the conversation, well, she didn't. You know, I mean, it's like, I, it was information, I shared it, but it sounded kinda, because it was. It's human beings talking about it.
I would almost be interested in starting with the accountant. The accountant, the auditor, the auditor, the accountant. And seeing if they have any recommendations on, on a equitable and. Round way of, of, uh, charging an administrative fee across all funds. I mean, if they're auditing lots of different agencies, then they're gonna see a lot of different processes.
I can ask John.
Especially working secretly with our books.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I, um, going back to the, like, proposed budget now. I don't know what your guys' thoughts are, um. I mean, in proposing this, I mean, I know that it's, we're, we're realistically not gonna meet this figure. I feel, I mean, knowing that going forward. With other budgetary ifs, you know, like, what revenues are we gonna receive and. Expenses are gonna be familiar, I do feel like we're still safe enough to go with this and not make any big changes.
With our proposed budget, I need to, because looking at, looking at a lot of the actuals. And 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 where we've got money put, the potential of spending everything, I don't think is there, and I think we have enough room. That if we didn't realize that number, we're still gonna be okay.
And, you know, in the conversation to be had too, like going forward, just. If, if we get in a spot where we have, or the court has to say. Not in, in like a, a spending freeze, but, but you know, like maybe the conversation, like, let's be mindful, and. And I think departments are anyway, yeah, I think that they already are, it's just not standing, you know, when.
I think there, there really, some of the meetings you've had with department heads in the last few months. Uh, I think that finally, there was some understanding by a few that didn't seem to understand or. By, uh, that we had a tight budget, I think they're, they're understanding that now.
Well, at, at, my strategy at this point has been kind of an even-handed across the board approach. Um, if we go deeper than this, it's gonna become prioritizing, and some departments are gonna be prioritized over and above others.
Uh, yeah, I remember.
But at this point right now, it's been kind of a pretty even.
Well, that's when, when we had the budget crisis, and we had to start looking at everything. Um, and and at our, one of our work sessions recently, Dr. Lanza said, you guys targeted us with. Every, we, we actually said, we have to start with services we are mandated to provide, and I mean, we, we had to have these discussions. When every department came in, we, you know, for the record, you know, are your services mandated by the state that the county must provide, do you know, you know, and. We did that because we had to, we had to do a framework for which to start to analyze and see what, what. Cause the cuts had to be so deep at that time, but, uh. Yeah, it's gonna be challenging, but. People will feel targeted, but it, it has to be thorough discussions about all aspects, and then. Some priorities, like you say, end up after we know what we know.
And just the way life is, if you don't touch somebody's project or program, they're happy, but as soon as you touch it, then they're.
Well.
Then they're upset.
Before we adjourn today, I'm gonna ask you guys on the OSU thing, just real quick.
So, well, before we leave this completely, aren't we going to, is that, is that the action items, is we're gonna, um, do some more research?
Yes, do you want, I should ask, do you want me to add, I have this word document, do you want me to add? The verbiage that I discussed, and then I can send it to Holly, and it could go on the agenda for Wednesday, just to get this reviewed and signed.
We could either have it in the session or go with what we're. What we worked out today, and then, like you say, do the homework, but knowing that. We're doing the homework to try and capture a bigger picture of what's, of what the other counties are actually doing that they don't.
Are we gonna approve this policy then on the first?
That's why I'm asking, I could, I could add the verbiage changes and send it out to you guys to look at.
Would you, because I tend to be kind of picky on that, you know. And actually, it's a good thing, so go ahead.
Um, but we haven't really addressed, in this current format, we haven't addressed the capital project.
Well, he's gonna shift the language. The language I thought we could add was, um, capital outlay building projects are subject to county court discretion. Cause that's not like a capital outlay pickup purchase, but it would address the building of Fairgrounds project reason.
So I would say be prepared, because we can't make a decision here, but be prepared on Wednesday to come, wh- what's, what's that criteria gonna be?
Do we need county council involved at some point or not, on this kind of a matter?
I don't, I don't, I don't think so.
And I won't be here on Wednesday, so if anybody has questions for me.
Say, discussion, possible action, because we might not be.
Yeah, I mean, you don't have to approve it, but you could discuss it, or you could table it and tell there's six. We've got three more, four more court meetings by the end of the year.
I would say, you know, try to maybe at least get it taken care of by the mid, by mid May, one, two more weeks, I mean, we, we will.
Doesn't have to be Wednesday.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um.
But if you did have those changes ready for us to review, that would be great.
But if you did have those changes ready for us to review, that would be great.
I'm going to send out an email to administrators, and ask them for their feedback on how they determine.
I will email.
Regular, and differentiate between regular expenditures, normal routine operational expenditures, and capital budgets.
I will email Jackson and Kooz to get their percentages.
One month.
Important one.
All right, next item then is the OSU contract.
When we were, when you weren't present, we were looking at, uh, amounts, it appeared that maybe what you helped fix before might be sliding back, it, it looked like maybe they have funds in, uh, in their bank. So, I would be honest, but maybe not. And as I was looking at the, uh.
So here's the FY twenty four. Everybody, OSU extension service done for FY twenty four. Which is up from last year, from a hundred and that's twenty five. FY twenty five, so FY twenty three was a hundred and one thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars. FY twenty four was a hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred dollars. And their request this year for the budget is a hundred and twenty thousand, thirty dollars.
Now.
There's fifteen.
Well, I thought, Bill, what you showed me before was perhaps different, but, um, we just want to make sure they aren't banking money, that the invoices that are, that are provided, at least according to this contract, say, in monthly, twelve monthly payments, and if it's reimbursement, more or less, then it shouldn't be a problem, right?
Well, they still had some funds left from that time, when they were banking, so to speak. They still had some funds left, and at the beginning of the year, when I noticed it, when I, when I saw and noticed that they still had funds in their account, I told them, I'm not going to pay anymore until, until we deduct this monthly off of this balance, and we're down to zero now.
Okay. And that's fine, because their contract says, you know, that they'll be used exclusively for the payment of the expenses related to the operations, and that the number of employees will vary based on need and subject to available funding. So, if, if, what we were to give them the full amount, they may have to reduce that to E, right, it's their decision how they would provide the services if, if the contract to the mountain are not exactly what I wanted.
I've read through this, and it's it's vague at best.
Which it was, uh, vague at best, um, because it's work funding and employee that becomes theirs, but they only have an employee due to our financial contribution. And that's why we put it subject to what we can budget for, which comes back to our larger discussion of what we're going to choose to support with the funds that we do have, versus the funds that have to prioritize. But that's where part of their overall budget, does that include the building rent in those current figures? Because when you look at this page in our budget, again, twenty one, twenty two, it doesn't look like there was any actuals plugged in. And so it just is off the payment to the university and telecom, there was no vehicle rent or building rent in twenty one, twenty two, twenty two, twenty three, that was.
And those were sort of COVID times, right? Did that make any difference to?
Yeah, they, they have very little bit of one.
I don't know when they started the rent thing, has that been going on for years?
I thought it was in kind, right?
It was
It is.
In kind, but we budgeted as part of our contribution, and so that's why one, one of those, again, that checked the record, we have a building rent round in the budget of this, but then this line is budgeted at that, but the actuals are that, but the employee didn't work as much, and that probably plays into that being far less than the budget.
So, outside of salaries, they have office administration supplies, general operating supplies, books, minor equipment, telephone, telecommunication, that is zero, uh, postage and freight, five hundred, duplicate copying, um, printing and, which all, all this is in line, really, because they're going to use our, our copy of machines and everything that we're already paying for.
I think they have their own, that campus provides them. Do we provide them with one?
I mean, do they both help and use our post?
I was always machine under the impression that it was their internet service and their, um, would that be a good idea?
Oh, it says right here, included in rent. So.
You know, what's included in rent, but I believe.
Utilities included in rent, custodial non-contract, uh, included in rent. Uh, building rentals, building rentals and lease, including in rent. Um, cop, duplicated copying, yeah, I don't find that. Duplicating copying expenses, five hundred dollars included in rent, printing and publishing, five hundred. Um, that's in, that's in the, um, it's in the county's column. Insurance, two hundred and fifty, travel, five thousand. Student projects, supplies, four H, five thousand.
I think when, when we first started looking into all this, they have ninety thousand dollars of our money in their bank, earning them interest.
Conference registration fees and rare AmeriCorps funding.
Well, if everything's as it should be, that's okay.
So our column comes to a hundred and twenty, twenty thousand dollars. Um, their column comes to, that's in kind. Extension county office retained in county district zero.
This, this is showing me a hundred and twenty thousand towards the university payment that they get to bill towards. This amount, but then this is all in kind, so the total contribution is much higher.
Yeah.
When you look at the other things that we're supporting and what have on top of.
So we're supporting them, well, on this paper, a hundred percent.
And so this does not include the extension agent, extension agent is a employee of the state, so it's their office staff that we contribute to, as well as the student interns, and then supplies and materials for general score.
As he, it, on their sheets, you can see in twenty three, they had a, a projected ending fund balance of fifty six thousand, three seventy four, and twenty four, they had one of seventy nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty two, and now it's down to zero because we used that.
Thank you, thank you. That was one of the things that made me mad.
I just remember, like, work that number.
So it's good that it's for you, Dan. Well, that was it, thank you, I just wanted.
So, I mean, what did, so then, yes, what, this, this contract is new this year, June. It's new this year.
Do they ever come and ask us to approve any capital outlay items that they would like to expend or, or purchase? Paid for, it's in there as a, the county league.
Maybe.
This arm, this arm is being thirty of twenty twenty four, and this is the one that we can't.
You don't have to copy your file.
Yeah, but the, but the
Oh, I see.
The lease agreement was signed in twenty one, and that's the same time this one was, so I don't know if.
We all discussed a signature page.
Yeah.
Well, one of us.
I don't, I mean.
Let's see, um, but this one, I didn't lease agreement, so the vehicle, the ground.
The vehicle lease, vehicle use agreement, sorry. Which, that, there's a, there's a big expense with this, that's not captured on this either.
The vehicles?
Yeah.
Do they use the vehicles a lot?
That vehicle, and motor pool, I think.
Yeah, the pool vehicles for OSU.
I think Clay's used it once while I've been here.
I know, I know, Christine's used them several times, but I've seen her couple of keys. And they're gone for a week at a time.
Yeah, when they go to conferences, it's not.
Um, I, I mean, it's four H is great. Where do we, where do we prioritize?
Exactly.
You know, I, I mean, quite frankly, and without getting too deep in budget, but, you know, predator control, um, OSU just had this big conversation last week, the senior center, you know, all these different programs, where do we start to prioritize that?
Yeah, we'll be discussing about sort of our, our values and principles and priorities under a scenario of having less funding overall, what's the most important thing we provide? And then the, the, the good to have, and then the, if you can, have it.
With each of these, you know, the period that you brought up, making sure that we understand exactly.
Well, there's a few more in there too, but those are just three off the top of my head.
But I think sometimes we haven't had the full picture of the full contribution, and so making sure that there's clear understanding of what the full contribution is, career control is pretty straightforward with that. Lined out a little more, some of these others with the vehicle agreement, like, say, that adds up with a lot of usage.
You know, you go predator control though, and I've tried to get them to get some kind of more detail, what'd you do for us this month? You know, how many ravens did you go out and deal with, how many, how many coyotes did you?
Well, they have that internally, they have a challenge of getting it from their internal into their other deal, Shane.
I don't care if it's handwritten.
Shane had recut like the economic development weekly thing, you know?
Yeah.
Some bullets on it.
Shane's struggling with the internal from getting it information he has onto that other deal, because we asked for it, we didn't want to unlock this stuff.
Well, at this point though, we don't even get that though.
No, he, he was having, like, they struggled getting, you know, people to put that into the deal because.
And I'm not saying that they're not, I'm just saying that at this point right now, it's hard to measure that, because we don't.
Well, that, yeah, you have to talk to the person that's on the ground here, when you talk to him, he is very good. Providing the services that we're looking for, with the contract, so that, that's one, because I do talk to him on a legal basis, I'm not concerned about some of the others that I don't see on his legal basis, it's more challenging for me to understand, and then some of the things we learned with some of the contributions that I wasn't aware of with the senior center, for example, was disappointing that I never understood some of those additional contributions that were brought up at the last budget meeting.
You know, and I, I, again, I don't have it down too, too far of a radical, but I will agree too, that some of those conversations, while, while the public express concerns, because they think that's the place to do it, is budget, but that's not the place for those discussions, it's in this body, you know.
No, it's not a budget committee process.
No.
And when you have, well, you're not the chair of the budget committee, but, well, May second will be a busy day, and I hope, maybe, you know, I'll just ask Rick to, you know, please be very, very firm on things, and we don't want people like the DAs, you know, I know, he probably knows better by now, but, you know, the negotiations already happened on the, the personnel side of stuff, and we just need to tell us anything that jumps out that you think we ought to know about, um, thank you, I mean, it's almost that short.
That's, that's two things this time around. Um, Roadmaster came in, what do you need to know, or what do you want to know, and, you know, ask your questions. Instead of, instead of feeling compelled to go line by line by line, he opened it up for the committee to do that. GIS brought in printed, printed itemized list, whatever, of, this is what I've done, this is what I'm going to do this next year. It answered all those questions.
We know, it's gone a long way, before you were on the court, um, there was still department heads who would come in, and of course, they have their own internal ways of, you know, depicting their budget, I get that. But they'd be working off of that, and it didn't jive exactly on what we are looking at, and.
I, I just remember, it was like fair manager came in.
No, no, there were others too, there, but, but, I mean, they, they could not talk to us about the budget sheets we were dealing with, because they don't know why, I, I don't know why, I mean, it seems to me they can have their supporting documents to help answer questions.
It's been very good to all.
It, it, it used to be really bad, I mean.
There's a couple of other departments that still kind of want to do that, and I have to trim it out at the negotiation time.
Yeah, and just say, this is, this is the format that the budget committee can want to talk to you about, work with you on, and that's it.
So. Um.
So, uh, should we plan on reviewing this, having it on agendas, so that we can actually have a wish in room? Um, if we need to update it by.
Sorry, make fifteen agenda look like, is it vertical? Okay. Let's.
Potentially add it to that.
Yeah, we, obviously, I'm going to do it in two days between now and Wednesday, uh, but I think maybe fifteen by that time, and I'll give the, the regional manager time director, whatever her title is, um, a call, and have some preliminary conversations and. Yeah, I have, I have a hard stop right now, okay? Got carried away with it, and I have to go pick up the train too.
Oh.
All right, uh, it is, uh, three twenty, and, uh, work session will stand adjourned, thank you.
All the kids, there's some, some brain now.
Um, Hazel's was still, oh, okay. You have some, a good friend during, in it.